Good evening. I'd like to call the
Lucas me a message saying he can't get
I'd like to call the December 21st, 2020, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. One moment, Mr. Kennedy, do you say Luke is having difficulty getting in?
Yeah, he texted me and said he's having trouble logging in.
I see. Yeah, we're gonna want him, obviously. All right, let's, uh, let's figure out what that problem is. We'll we will try that again here in a moment. All right. Okay, so everyone's ready now.
Yep.
All right, recordings on. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the University Heights City Council to order today is Monday, December 21st, 2020. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Mrs. Pardi? Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Erdel?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Okay, very good. So our motion to excuse Mrs. Party. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, second by Mr. Erdel. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Mrs. Party is excused. Will all those who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have a set of minutes from the last meeting, which was December 7, 2020. Are there any changes? And if not, is there a motion?
Yes, there are. One change on page six. Paragraph two. Starts with Mr. Rock, who sits on the planning commission. That should be council liaison. Sits on the planning commission as the council liaison.
Very good. Kelly, do you have that? Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other changes to this set of minutes? Now, is there a motion to accept them as amended by Mr. Rock?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We'll take the motion by Mr. Rock. Phil, is that a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Erdel. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Minutes are approved. We're now at item five, which is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Total time allowed 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by council ordinance number 91 point dash 25. Is there anybody here this evening who would care to address the city? If so, please raise your hand. And when we recognize you, if you would state your name and address for the record, you will then have five minutes. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. I know that there are some members of the public here. Ms. Rollinson, Mr. Weiss, do you have anything that you wanted to address the city on this evening? Not? Then very good. We will, oh, I see. Oh, okay. Mrs. Rollinson, did you have something?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome here all the same, of course. Thank you. Well, then, if there are no comments from the audience, we will proceed then to reports and communications from the mayor and taking of action. Out of the interest of time, I am going to dispense with a formal report and simply wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a happy solstice, a festivus for the rest of us, and and a Happy New Year to all.
And a Happy Kwanzaa.
And a festive Kwanzaa. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a lot of holidays this month.
There are, and, and, and they're all they're all worthy of observation best we can, given the limits of the pandemic. So so that concludes my report. Thank you. Well, then move to the agenda items. First item is item A ordinance 2020 dash 62 enacting codified ordinance section 276.11 entitled Public Meeting and Notice for the Purpose of Providing Civil Service Commission Members With the Right to Establish a Regularly Scheduled Monthly Civil Service Commission Meeting, The Date and Time Convenient for Civil Service Commission Members. This is on second reading. As the council will recall, we have discussed an effort to better serve the city and better facilitate the work for police and fire departments with respect to examinations and hiring and promotions and so on, that this would be facilitated if we were to establish a regular monthly meeting for the benefit of, of keeping a healthy pace of the work and for the convenience of the members of the Civil Service Commission so that they know to reserve a particular date each month for the purpose of meeting. And much like planning commission, keep that date open until they've heard whether or not we have agenda items for them to consider at that meeting. So this was up for first reading this last time. I know that the commission members, I understand, have agreed that their monthly meeting date would be the, the second Tuesday of each month at 4:30 PM. And when our clerk of counsel, Mrs. Thomas, releases the notice of meetings for 2021, those Tuesday dates will be included throughout. So that the public will also have the benefit of knowing that that is generally when the Civil Service Commission will meet, at least as a regular meeting time, if there is business to conduct. So I want to thank our Civil Service Commission for their cooperation in, in, in choosing a date and committing to that. I want to thank Mrs. Thomas for working with them to help get that done. Mr. McConville, is there anything you'd care to add with respect to the ordinance?
Very briefly, Mayor, just that this ordinance is similar to the planning commission ordinance that was adopted a couple of years ago in an effort to have a regularly scheduled meeting and thereby avoid any difficulty scheduling Civil Service Commission meetings when there's business to be conducted.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions or discussion? And if not, is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
I'll second.
We've motion to adopt by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries and ordinance 2020 62 is adopted. Next is letter B ordinance 2020 dash 63 authorizing temporary appropriations for current and other expenditures at the City of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January 1, 2021 and ending March 31st, 2021. This is on second reading. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, sir. Did we lose Mr. Kennedy? Looks like we did. Yes, he just texted me saying he lost his connection.
This one's on second reading, so.
It is on second reading. And while there are other things that Dennis will be explaining later in the meeting, I think everyone is, is familiar with with what item B is, that it is to make appropriations for the first three months of the year while we work on the 2020 budget. Is there any questions or discussion with respect to that? And if not, is there a motion?
Mayor, Mayor, let's make sure we read the title. So we've had our second reading.
Oh, I thought I did. Okay, but I will do it again. Ordinance 2020 dash 63 authorizing temporary appropriations for current and other expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January 1, 21 and ending March 31st, 2021 on second reading. And it doesn't say this, but this should also be on emergency, should it not, Mr. McConville?
I
so, so that it takes effect before the first of the year?
It is on emergency, correct.
Okay, very good. So on
we don't need to waive the reading rule.
Correct. So is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 63 on emergency?
Awesome.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Mr. Gould, a second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion? Very good. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Before we proceed, the next three items all involve Mr. Kennedy. Should we take the agenda out of order? And allow Mr. Kennedy some time? He says he's having an unknown Zoom error and he's trying to reboot. Luke, do we need a motion to take agenda items out of order, or can I, as chairs?
Okay, you do that by emotion.
Okay, very good. Is there a
Mayor, I would move to take any items which Mr. Kennedy is required to, which I believe that are the next two or next three?
Next three. Uh, next
Yes, three.
I'd actually like F also for Mr. Kennedy. So four.
If we can move the next four items after the fifth and then just proceed to the, the item, what?
G.
E, yeah, G. I would so move.
Okay, so we have a motion to take item G next, and then the next four items. C, D, E, and F.
Upon Mr. Kennedy's return.
Okay. Very good. We have a second by Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Thomas, you please call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, very good. We are now on item G, which is ordinance 2020 dash 66, appointing Rachel Mullen as Assistant Clerk of Counsel for the limited purpose of performing duties on behalf of the Civil Service Commission for the period of January 1, 2021 through June 30, 2021. This is on emergency. Mr. McConville, would you like to address the ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance that makes a temporary appointment of Rachel Mullen as Assistant Clerk for purposes of performing duties in connection with the Civil Service Commission. This is not a codified ordinance. It will expire by its own terms at the end of June 30th. And so prior to that point in time, a council can consider whether to extend the appointment or not. We've indicated that there's nothing in the ordinance that will be construed to contradict or alter the terms of codified ordinance section 22009, which is the section that indicates that an assistant clerk shall serve at the pleasure of the clerk. But this is a limited appointment for particular purposes by law.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Is there any discussion about this item? And if not, is there a motion?
We, we would ask that the motion be on emergency. So that Rachel can begin performing these duties on the first of the year.
Okay. Very good.
Moved ordinance 2020 dash 66 on emergency.
Okay, very good. We have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 66 on emergency by Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there any discussion? Before we take a vote, Mr. McConville, Ms. Mullen is here on the meeting. Though she doesn't take, would not take office till January 1, provided the ordinance passes. May I swear in this evening here on the council record, or should we wait until January 1?
Either way works.
Okay. Well, then, maybe we'll do it now. Very good. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Mrs. Thomas, will you please, well, there's, there's two votes here, first on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. The ordinance passes. Rachel, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Okay.
Okay. I
I
Say your name.
Rachel Mullen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
In the office.
In the office.
Of Assistant Clerk of Counsel.
Of Assistant Clerk of Counsel.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So long as I may hold such position.
So long as I may hold such position.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks. And we all look forward to getting to work. All right. Very good. With Mr. Kennedy back, we can return to item C on the agenda, which is resolution 2020 dash 64 requesting the county budget commission to advance taxes from the proceeds of tax levies for the period of January 1, 2021 to December 31st, 2021 pursuant to section 321.24, the Ohio revised code. This is on emergency, Mr. Kennedy. Dennis, can you hear?
Freezing up here.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, but I, I, Mayor. This particular ordinance is any annual statutory requir- requirement for us to request that the county budget commission advances collections of property taxes during the tax year. So it needs to be filed by December 31st. And I would ask for your approval on emergency.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? If not, is there a motion to approve this resolution on emergency?
So moved down.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Weiss and a second by Mr. Gould. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Resolution 2020 dash 64 passes. Next is item D ordinance 2020 dash 69 authorizing permanent appropriations for current and other expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January 1, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020 and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is again a statutory requirement. It will put us in a position where our appropriations pass the test of the budget commission at the end of the year. And they will issue a not to exceed appropriation statement to the city, which is a key component of the audit. So the 2020 audit will be covered. What this, the details of this particular measure are just adjustments to all the departments to make sure that they have enough appropriation, particularly in the area payroll, because we have one more payroll to go before the end of the year. But is, I put a cover memo in the packet. The general fund is actually less, considerably less than what we started the year at. Total for all funds is a little bit more. That's because we added that $1.1 million for the KIRZ Act money that came in. But filing this by December 31st will put us in good position to have our audit without any issue next year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? And if not, is there a motion?
I'll move, Mayor.
Very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Blankfeld on emergency.
Yes.
Very good. Motion on emergency to adopt by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mayor.
Very good. Second by Mr. Erdel. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Ordinance 2020 dash 69 is adopted. Next is item E ordinance 2020 dash 70, authorizing the advance of funds from the general fund 100 to the BCI FBI fee fund 214 in the amount of $5,000 and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. Again, this is a year-end correcting item. The general fund is going to loan on this fiduciary fund, $5,000. That way, there is enough appropriation to cover all the expenses. Appropriations have to be supported by fund balance. We will then pay back that money. It's a timing issue between the billing that we get from the State of Ohio versus the collections that we get from our police department. So we will repay that during the year next year, and I'll make sure that is in the 2021 budget.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you. Is this just for maybe this is more for Chief Rogers, the police department needing to get like fingerprints for a case, or is this actual fingerprints that they're taking of people, like new police and fire and staff?
This is for a web check service that the police department offers to the general public for background checks, usually associated with employment. We offer this service where we would charge a fee to the individuals that would be getting fingerprint and background checks done. And then the city is then billed for the service by the state as well.
Okay, do we like, I think the fee is what, like 35 for a BCI and I forget exactly what the FBI is, but does the city make any money for like an administrative fee?
Yes, just generally speaking, the state usually charges in the low twenties for each type of test, and the city usually charges about 35 for each test. So it does cover the administrative fee or the administrative resource that would be needed for the fingerprint.
And if a res, is this only for residents? If they need a, a background check, they can make an appointment?
It's not, it's for anybody. That would be required by their employer to get fingerprints done. And then also, we, we also use that platform for criminal justice purposes, but there, there wouldn't be no fees from the state associated with that.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020 dash 70 on emergency?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, will you take the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is ordinance 2020 dash 65 providing for paid emergency administrative leave and allowing the mayor or his designated temporarily expand the use of existing paid sick leave and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. McConville? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is similar
Thank you, Mayor. This uh, ordinance is similar to an ordinance we passed earlier this year. It would allow uh, it would afford um, an additional eighty hours of administrative leave um, to uh, the city's full-time employees to be used um, in the event of an absence that was due to COVID. Um, in addition, the ordinance as the previous ordinance did earlier this year, would afford the mayor um, the discretion to um, allot additional paid administrative leave to employees who um, had a code of COVID-related absence but had no other accrued paid time off.
Very good. This replaces uh, an ordinance that would be expiring at the end of this calendar year, correct?
Yes, the ordinance passed earlier this year expires um, December thirtieth.
Very good. Thank you. Any uh, questions about this ordinance, Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you. I'm actually, um, a couple of things. What was the date that we originally passed this ordinance? Was it in like March and April or April?
I think it was in April.
So is this, is this taking into account that there's FMLA COVID nineteen? Um, relief right now for organizations that is eighty hours? So we want to do, and that was, I don't, I don't think that was available when we passed this originally, because that's the law right now.
I believe the FFCRA benefits also expire as of the end of the year.
So I know there's talk about um, extending that.
There, there is, there, you're correct about that.
So I'm just hesitant to pass this now if, if that, you know, i- if that's going to be extended.
I, I thought it was extended, Luke. Was that not extended at the, the bill passed yesterday?
I, I thought it was not, but I could be mistaken, Justin. I, I thought that they left out um, benefits relating to uh, municipalities, but that might have been in the, in the vein of CARE Act, CARES Act. Funds.
Just a question for Mr. Kennedy. Do you, can you ballpark how many of our employees use that? FMLA COVID relief? Like, I assume we're using that first before we give extra days out of our own pocket, right?
Right, we do code those leave times separately on the payroll. Um, off the top of my head, I do not know what that is. I can look it up and tell everybody before the end of the meeting if um, that would help.
Thank you.
Probably been if I had to put a guess on it, probably eight to ten people that have taken advantage of it. But I, I'd have to look up the details.
Yeah. I would also add that we initiated this originally prior to the CARES Act funding being there for this simply as a matter of public health and making sure that we were encouraging our employees to not come in if, if they had a diagnosis or had reason to believe that they, you know, should be quarantined. So um, we've had enough cases of COVID here uh, in city government that I would not want to do anything that would be a disincentive to, to uh, continuing that course of action when people have been exposed or have been told that they should quarantine or self-isolate.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing. I, I just want to get clarification on, on those couple of things.
Okay.
And how does this differ uh, from the, there was administrative leave in March that I believe was not by ordinance. Uh, Dennis, I'm referencing communication from you at the end of April twenty twenty uh, that since March, the mayor has awarded over seventeen thousand dollars for seven hundred and twenty hours of administrative leave to members of the Housing and Building Department. Is this a separate type of leave than that type of leave, administrative leave?
Yes.
And, and how are those two things different? Why, why do we need a, an ordinance if there's already the ability to do that? I, I just wanted to understand the different types of leave that we would then have.
Uh, I, I have some recollection of that and, and Dennis, if, if um, you want to fill in any blanks or, or if you disagree with my recollection, please chime in. But um, my recollection is that there was um, administrative, paid administrative leave that was awarded. But it was done um, initially without there being any policy or law in place. And that um, one of the things we were concerned about is making sure that any um, past action and or on future action was in connection with a council appropriation. So that council was approving um, the use of funds for paid administrative leave in the kinds of circumstances that just as an example, building department employees were faced with. Um, you know, where they were being asked not to come into work, but they were able. You know, it wasn't because of their, they were sick or anything like that. They just were being asked to stay away. So, so I mean, I think it was a dual purpose. I think there was um, the desire on the one hand to per, you know, to not be in essence, laying folks off, um, but also wanting to make sure that the auditor was not going to have a concern about amounts that had already been paid to employees who were being asked to stay home.
So, you know, now that, you know, we passed this original ordinance in April, March or April. Now that we know a lot more about this issue. I think it's good practice to be able to say, no, you need to quarantine. And unfortunately, sometimes people have to quarantine multiple times because they're exposed multiple times. And, you know, they could be at work. They could be at work and, and have to quarantine, then be back at work for a month, and then are exposed again. And, you know, I agree that we need to give the flexibility. I do think we need to put something in that says, I need a, I need a doctor's note that says I've been exposed to to COVID, or, you know, I, you know, I tested positive, just so we have that backup. Um, and people aren't abusing it. Um, I'd like to add that language in if we pass it again. Is that possible? That's just a question for the law director.
That is possible, yes.
And Luke, I'd like to better understand, you know, I guess by next time we, we have this on, just be kind of a, a outline of the available federal programs that will apply to us. I, I know it's been so confusing. Uh, I, I've been trying to keep up on it for nonprofit purposes. You know, what was added to PPP, how it was extended, what was taken out at the last minute. So just understanding what exists going into the new year. Um, generally, you know, I never want one of our employees who, who may have had exposure to come in. Um, that's a, a, I think a commitment, not just to that individual employee, but I think one that we should make to, to our employees in general. That we're going to keep the workplace safe. Um, I, I have concerns financially about the other type of administrative leave. That is when a department is unable to work because of uh, conditions on the ground. Um, and rather than utilizing federally available uh, programs which would supplement income in the event of a layoff um, that the, the citizens of the city absorb the costs of that department not working for a period of time. That to me um, is, is a different situation and, and one which I have a, a little bit more of a concern. Uh, so I think understanding the different federally available programs for this um, would be something that I, I'd want to understand. So thank you.
The last question I think we just need clarity on is if this FMLA is renewed, does the eighty hours start over, or is it just a continuation of the eighty hours? I never received clarification in my own, you know, organization about that, that I, you know, that I work for. So if we could just get clarification, does the new year mean there's new eighty hours, or you only take it once and you're done?
Well, I think there are two different issues there. One is um, what is the nature of the benefits? If extended under the um, stimulus package. That would be one issue. I think that's the issue that Mr. Gould was just asking me to clarify. Um, prior to the next meeting. The other issue is what about the city's eighty hours that were granted by ordinance earlier in the year? And that ordinance by its terms was to expire um, on December thirtieth. So there wouldn't be any carryover of paid administrative leave from the city for any employee who hadn't used it during twenty twenty. Um, but what, but there could be, there could be overlapping benefits between paid administrative leave provided by the city on the one hand and newly extended benefits under the stimul- stimulus package under the FFCRA. And I think that's what would need to be clarified.
Well, not just that, but if you used it in twenty twenty, the CARES eighty hours, does that carry over, or is it new in twenty twenty-one? Not just the city benefits, the CARES benefits. What happens if you used your eighty hours in two thousand twenty, right? Now you get, now you used it for quarantine, or you have a child that's sick with COVID. Now do you get it again if you get it in twenty twenty-one? So now you have you know.
You're, you're asking through the city?
That's separate. I mean, the city's separate, right? So you can have the CARES eighty. And then we're saying you can have up to another through the city if, if you need it. But I guess my question is, does the CARES carry over, or is it? Is it, you know, you used it in twenty twenty, you're done. You can't use it in twenty twenty-one.
I would think that, I mean, I would think the CARES is governed by the federal.
Right.
What they write.
So that-
The way this ordinance reads, the mayor comes up with rules. It says, the mayor, or is it may adopt rules and regulations regarding the authorization of additional paid administrative leave. So that seems like it's going to be different. And it seems like it's going to be the mayor that's going to come up with these rules.
Like, do- Right, right. But my question is, my, my, my thought process will be different if in twenty twenty-one, somebody needs to use eighty hours of CARES leave when they already used eighty hours in twenty twenty. The city one is separate. I guess my question right now is the, the federal.
Right. But if it's not, if it's part of the new or more recent stimulus act, is it just a clean slate and you have the opportunity again in the new year?
That's, that's my best guess as to what it would be, because what, remember, there, there's a difference between the CARES Act, which was an act that was essentially doling out dollars to, among other people or entities, municipalities. And then the FFCRA, which was the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. And that, what that was doing was it was mandating that employers subsidize um, an additional set of FMLA benefits.
So I misspoke. I, I didn't mean CARES. I meant the-
So I, I knew what you meant. Um, but eh, for purposes of our discussion, I think the answer is that beginning in twenty twenty-one, you would have new FMLA benefits. But the reality is that it really depends on what our policy is. Some employers calculate FMLA based on a calendar year. So every time the, the calendar rolls over, new, a new set of benefits um, is presented to all employees. And then other employers calculate it based on the individual employee's anniversary of employment. And so I, I'm not sure what we, how we do it. My guess is we do it by calendar year because it's so much easier administratively.
Calendar year.
And so it's likely to be the case that um, if the FFCRA, FMLA benefits have been extended that the calendar year would sort of, you know, refresh those for all of our employees. So if they had taken, you know, FMLA benefits under FFCRA in twenty twenty, they would have the same opportunity to do so in twenty-one.
Okay, so I, I would like to um, amend this, this ordinance for two things then, I guess. One is that the FFCRA leave is used first. And that if the city has to approve additional hours beyond the eighty FFCRA that there's documentation from a medical doctor that they need to be home.
Do you include the county board of health? Is sufficient for that documentation?
Well, the county board of health would only be notified if they got a positive test.
Right.
It wouldn't be from a it, what, that wouldn't, that wouldn't necessarily say that they have to be quarantined. They wouldn't know that because-
They would only know that because your organization reported it. Like, I had to be quarantined because we were waiting to see if I had a positive test, which, thank goodness, I didn't. But I had to be out of, and so my physician said, I'll send you a letter. But then it's, it's the organization for which I worked that notified the board of health when there's a positive test or-
Right. When I was quarantined, we notified the board of health, who then ordered me to quarantine.
The city did, as your employer?
The city did.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was no physician involved at that point. So I didn't have a doctor's note, but I had the order from the board of health.
I think most people, you would get it from your doctor and you would bring it to your employer saying, hey, or send it to your employer, saying that I have to be out. And that would be the, the uh, the documentation, the backup to your being able to use that paid time, right, Luke, or no?
Well, I, I think it's happening in a variety of ways depending on the employer. A lot of employers are encouraging their employees not to come into the workplace if they're
Correct.
demonstrating any symptoms, um, or if they've been exposed to someone who has COVID. So um, I, I can envision a lot of circumstances where someone would essentially know they have to quarantine without ever having seen a doctor. For example, their child comes home from school and, you know, turns out they have COVID. Um, well, they're, they're likely um, facing exposure and, and, you know, should quarantine. I don't know that they need a doctor's note to, to know that they should quarantine in those circumstances. There, there are other-
In that, in that circumstance, it would be a pediatrician letter. That's an easy one.
Yeah. It, it's not so much that they would know to it, it's that they could verify to their employer that there is a real need for them to do that. I'm not suggesting that any of our employees would take advantage of this. Um, but there-
How is the city-
There seems to be something, you have to have some kind of backup, instead of just saying, hey, I don't want to go to work for a couple of weeks. I'm going to say I was exposed.
Um, that's not happening.
No, it hasn't. But I'm just saying, I don't know how many times you want to end up paying somebody to be out for forty hours or eighty hours.
Right. Well, we don't want to have to do it at all, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. And the thing is, is we are working with the county board of health throughout all of this. And, and, and for every one of these absences that we've had, we have had backup. And the idea that we don't is bullshit.
Excuse me?
I mean, we have-
Excuse me?
All of the absences that we have had due to COVID. And, and, and the, the idea that we don't, or that, or that we need to put this into the ordinance when we've been doing it all along. I, and, and the idea that people are faking it, or white fake it?
I, I specifically said I didn't think that any of our employees might. However, However. The city has to protect itself financially. I did not imply that any of our employees had.
That was not the implication at all when I mentioned that.
Thank you.
At all.
No.
It was just.
I don't know where that came from.
So we have backup. When we have to pay people, it's in their personnel file. That's all.
Pick up on.
Was when I.
All along.
Okay, good, but so then.
Well, that would be a wonderful thing to outline to council.
Policy in the ordinance.
Right, well, where it says that, that there will be rules and regulations and there is authorized to adopt regarding the authorization. We are doing all these things.
And, and that would be something to outline to us as we're considering the ordinance that came before us this evening. So I see in, in the packet that we have, I see nothing regarding those regulations. I see nothing regarding the backup documentation that you're already keeping. I, so when these questions are asked. It seems as though the administration and council are in agreement as to the need for these things because the administration is already doing it. And so while I appreciate. You know, you sticking up for your employees. Simply asking these questions. It would seem more appropriate to, to. Provide the information about what's already being done so the council can. Come to a, come to a conclusion on it. Rather than suggest that the idea that, that we would have backup would be somehow disparaging to our employees.
Okay, so. Again, I, I, I would just like to, I, I have no problem because this is. This is on emergency. I have no problem making a motion on emergency to pass ordinance 2020 dash 65. But amending the ordinance that's written to say. The FRCRA, I'm sorry, what's the, what's the acronym again?
FFCRA.
It's a matter of order, you'll need to amend before you make a motion to adopt, I think. So we need, we need the motion to amend first.
Okay, so I want to make a motion to amend ordinance 2020 dash 65. To add the FFCRA. Leave needs to be used first and a, and documentation of. Quarantine or positive results needs to be documented.
Good, it's agreeable, is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good, we have a motion by Mrs. Weiss and a second by Mrs. Blankfield. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hey.
Okay, very good, amendment carries. We now have the ordinance 2020 dash 65 as amended. Is there a motion to adopt or is there further discussion at this point?
The only thing that I'd like to add is if the law director can give us. The final ruling. Um, you know, if, if the law director can find out if that was passed or not. The FFCRA piece.
Yes, I mean, I, I will clarify that for you. Okay, very good.
Are we waiting for something there?
I don't know, is there a motion? I thought maybe you were asking with Luke to clarify that now before we proceed.
Not now.
Well, then is there a motion? It, it, it appears, it appears that the FFCRA benefits have been. Extended in some fashion, but I'm not, I'm not. Sure exactly what the parameters are.
That's, that's fine.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Is there further discussion or is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Very good, is that a motion to adopt on emergency, Mrs. Weiss?
On emergency.
Very good, thank you. Motion by Mrs. Weiss on emergency, second I think was by Mrs. Berry.
Yes.
Second by Mrs. Berry. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Blankfield?
Hi.
There's two votes here, first on, on the suspension of the rules, Mrs. Thomas.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Nay.
Very good, then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Nay.
Very, very good, motion carries. Next is, we already did item G, so next is item. H ordinance 2020 dash 67 placing a moratorium on implementation of the. New building department fees and temporarily adopting the prior building department permit and fee schedule. This is on emergency. As the councils aware, we are in the process of converting. The building and housing departments operations to the citizen serve program. Program we've been using is program called Franklin, which is no longer being meaningfully supported by the vendor. Franklin was bought out by a competitor. They are providing minimal to no support at this juncture on the Franklin program. Trying to reprogram the Franklin program to even do something as seemingly simple as adjust the fees. Would be far more trouble than it is worth if, if, if even possible, which it may not. Feasibly be. We will be implementing the citizen serve program in the new year. And it makes far more sense at this point administratively to. To have the new fees in the building department coincide with the citizen serve program going live. We do not yet have a firm date for that, but we do anticipate that happening in the spring, probably around May. But that said, placing a moratorium on the implementation fees would be appropriate. So that we don't have an audit issue with respect to not being able to charge the new fees. While we catch up in implementing. Programs that allow us to collect those fees. Thus, we have ordinance 2020 dash 67 before us. And we'd ask then for a motion and for it to be adopted on emergency. Are there any questions?
So just to be, this is just for the increase in fees, correct? Not, you're not putting a moratorium on fees in general.
Oh, no, no.
Just, just to, to continue to charge the previous fees or the current fees until such time as they have the new system in place.
That is.
Yeah. It makes sense and having two new people on board that are learning the system, which will be great because they'll be fully integrated and using it. Cause that's what they were trained on. It makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Also move mayor.
Okay, very good, we have a motion dropped by Mrs. Blankfield, is there a second? Oh, and that's on emergency, yes, Mrs. Blank?
On emergency.
Motion of emergency by Mrs. Blankfield, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry, any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll first on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hey.
Mr. Go. Mr. Go, your vote?
Sorry, I was muted, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good, motion carries, thank you. Next is item I ordinance 2020 dash 63 enacting and supplementing the 2020 S17 supplement to the codified ordinances of the city of University Heights, Ohio. This is on emergency, Mrs. Thomas, would you care to discuss this item?
Yes, this is our, and we pass this ordinance annually. And it's for our codified ordinance books and it allows a codifier to place this page that we are in agreement. With allowing them to be our codifier for the upcoming year. This is standard protocol per the codifier.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, any questions on this? Any discussion? And if not, is there a motion to adopt? On emergency?
Bill moved.
Very good, motion to adopt on emergency by Mr. Erdel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss, any discussion? Saying done, Mrs. Thomas, we take the role first on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
And on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. Ordinance is adopted, thank you. Next is item J, motion approving emergency IT support and service for a period of two months from January 1, 2021 to February 28, 2021 from Starfish. In an amount not to exceed $8,000. I'll go ahead and take this one. As, as most of you are aware, the tech advisory commission put together an RFP, we have. Obtained bids. The tech advisory commission will not be meeting until after the first of the year to review those bids. In the meantime, our current IT services expire at the end of this month. We went ahead and obtained a bid for the next 60 days of the first, well, basically first two months of the new year. To afford us no lapse of, of, of IT services while the tech commission, tech advisory commission proceeds with its work. The $8,000 that, that we're being quoted here is similar and in line with the previous months. And we would simply ask then that. That the council approve and allow Starfish to continue through the end of February 28 while tech advisory commission. Continues its process. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve. Emergency IT support service for the period of two months. From January 1, 2021 to February 28, 2021 from Starfish in the amount not to exceed $8,000.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Rock, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry, any discussion on the motion? Saying done, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next item is item K, motion accepting health insurance rates for the city employees. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, sir. Dennis, are you with us? Mr. Kennedy appears to be frozen, at least on my screen. Maybe that's better. Mr. Kennedy, we're, have gotten to item K on the agenda, are you prepared to speak on this item? That's the motion to accept health insurance rates.
Can you? Can you hear me, sir?
I can hear you. Okay.
I'm having. Many problems with the connect. So I think it's some of our firewall, I'm not sure, but. Anyways, this item relates to a proposed renewal. For help. In terms for the employees, it's from Medical Mutual of Ohio, was our current provider. Increase represents 7.9%. From last year's rates, that equates to approximately $97,000 annually on the contract value. That of course is based on the current census, so people come or go or drop off or change programs. That amount will be subject to change, but. Ballpark estimate for discussion purposes, it's 97,000. The employee share of that would be roughly 13%, which is about $12,500. We are proposing because of all the. Various complications we experienced this year, particularly with COVID. Logistical issues with getting the healthcare committee together for collective bargaining units. The mayor's asked that we propose that. The administrative cost that's usually passed on to employees be absorbed by the city. That would be that 12,500. In that we formally cap. The employee contribution rates for 2021 at their current level. We did get alternative. Pricing from a couple of other carriers. Unfortunately, our plan has evolved into kind of custom made. Program, I think next year we should start considerably earlier. We, I did ask our consultant to get pricing in late September. They had an administrative change on their end. That put them behind, then I missed about a month of work. And things got fairly complicated at that point, but. There's probably some margin for improvement, but again, that's all based on what the claims are. We had two fairly high. Claims this year that are projected to carry over into 2021. And I think 7.9% based on the numbers that I saw would be a reasonable increase. Given the significance of those two claims. I'd be happy to answer any questions from anybody.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Weiss.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that that's a pretty good renewal in light of the, the climate right now. And I'm happy that the city was able to acquire this. You know, we also have to remember this is really the finance director's first full year. And, you know, next year. Will even be smoother.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion to? How should we couch this motion? There's suggested language here, we have it as the agenda is motion accepting health insurance rates for city employees.
That's fine.
Okay. Very good, is there a motion to accept the health insurance rates?
Don't move.
Very good, motion, Mr. Erdel, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mrs. Blankfield. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Very good. Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next then is item L, motion hold executive session immediately following this regular meeting for purposes discussing personal legal or real estate matters. Administration has nothing this evening for which it would require an executive session. And if there are no other matters, then we can move on from this item to Director of Finance, Mr. Kennedy, do you have a report this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I tried to send out all the financial reports for November last week, just working to get caught up. We are in pretty good shape down the year in a fairly favorable position. We're starting to work on different components of the budget and look forward to starting that process with the committee in the first week of January. I'll have final tax numbers from Rita probably by the end of this week. They're just in the process of making last minute adjustments and refunds. Any collections that they make will not get posted to our account till January. We have to file with the county on or before December 31st, so that's on our schedule for the next week and a half is to get all those various things done. If anybody has any questions about the particulars of anything contained in the revenue report, the expense report, statement of cash, the investment portfolio, we will start moving some money from our operating fund to the investment portfolio over the course of the next week to 10 days. So I had previously given you some information on that, and we'll start making those adjustments prior to your end. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you for everybody passing everything tonight. Much appreciated and happy holidays and stay safe to the end of the year. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Okay, very good. Thank you. It's good to have you back, sir. Next is Director of Law.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to apologize to members of council and the mayor for being late this evening. I don't know what was happening with Zoom. I was logging in the number on the agenda, and it kept telling me that it was not a valid number, and then suddenly it worked. So I apologize for my delinquency at the beginning of the meeting. I will have a memo out to members of council on whatever renewals or extensions are set forth in the newly adopted federal stimulus package related to FF CRA or any other employee benefits. I'm working on numerous issues for the city. Would be happy to take any questions that anyone might have or talk to anyone offline. And other than that, I would just like to wish everyone happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Happy holidays to you, too. Any questions for Mr. McConville? All right, very good. And we'll move on to public safety. Police Chief Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Chief Perko, fire.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. One item to report tonight. Cuyahoga County Fire Chiefs Association has been working diligently with the County Board of Health as well as the Ohio Department of Health for the first round of COVID vaccinations. The EMS providers in the fire department are grouped into the Phase 1A, which is the first round of vaccinations. These are going to be distributed in three county points of distribution at three fire department locations, east, south, and west. The east side location is going to be held at the Shaker Heights Fire Department next week, and I'll be participating in a group of east side fire chiefs to organize that event with the county and collaborate with them on how we are going to determine who receives the vaccination, since there is such a limited amount as well as how we're going to be administering them. It seems as of today that it will be paramedics within this region that do the actual administration in conjunction with the County Board of Health representatives. So a very fluid situation, but excited to work with them to get this provided to our members, and this will just be the beginning as we move forward through various phases in the state. That's all I have to report. Wish everybody a happy new year as well.
Okay, thank you. You, too, Chief. Any questions for Chief Perko? All right, very good. Service, Mr. Corney is on vacation, has been excused from the meeting, and he has no report. That takes us then to the city engineer, Mr. Chuney. He was here earlier. He seems to be off now. I don't believe he had a report, though. Okay. All right, Communications of Engagement, Mr. Cook is on vacation, has been excused from the meeting, and Economic Development, Ms. Drucker is on vacation and also excused from the meeting. So that brings us to the council standing committees, Building Housing, Mrs. Blankfield.
No report, Mayor.
Very good. Community Outreach, Mrs. Purdy is absent, but she asked that it be conveyed that on January 11th at 6:30 PM, there will be a Community Outreach Committee meeting and that Cleveland Mediation Center's Danielle Cosgrove will be joining us for that meeting to discuss the ongoing efforts at a city neighborhood mediation program. If there's anybody else from the committee who has anything they'd care to add at this point? All right, Economic Development, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor, we had a meeting last week on Tuesday to discuss the RP for the new zoning code, and our committee met and basically gave our just our last suggestions on how to update the RP. So that'll be going out in, I think, January, if not February, but that's going to come before council first, so that's what our committee did last week.
Yes, yes, very exciting development coming out of the committee, and thank you, Mr. Rock, and all committee members, as well as Mrs. Strucker for her strong work on drafting the RP. Was there anything further, Mr. Rock?
No further report.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Weiss.
Yes, thank you. There's a finance committee meeting about the budget on January 5th. There is also a subcommittee of the Strategic Planning Committee on January 11th.
Do we have times for those meetings?
The finance meeting is at 7:00, and the Strategic Planning Commission meeting is at 7:30, right after the Community Outreach Committee at 6:30.
Yes, okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. Erdl.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Safety, Mrs. Berry.
No report.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Service Utilities, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had two sessions, learning more from our citizens, what they wanted to convey regarding the pickup of solid waste in the city. What I'm doing now is working with a citizen in the community to come up with a survey to present to the committee for citywide distribution. And they've agreed to help, and we're currently setting up a time to meet by Zoom. The goal would be to create a document that could be sent to or delivered to each resident or each household in the city to gain feedback for council to use in making a final decision on the solid waste study. Other than that, nothing further to report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gould. Community, the whole, Mrs. Weiss.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just actually have a comment regarding your the words that you spoke to Councilwoman Blankfeld this evening. No one should ever be spoken to as crude as crudely as you spoke to Mrs. Blankfeld, and I actually think that you owe her an apology.
I think an apology is owed to every one of our employees who has suffered from COVID, the very idea that people who are faking it.
No one suggested that. That was
Exactly what you suggested. That was exactly what was implied by suggesting that.
That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. No one ever said that, and in a public meeting especially, to 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 talk the way you did was disgusting. It's not professional, and it doesn't become you of the mayor of the city. No further comment.
I stand with the city's employees, especially the ones that suffered from COVID, and and I continue to be offended on their behalf.
As a point of order, Mayor, that's the second time that you've used profanity towards this council in as many weeks.
And 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 you can stand behind your employees and but also be respectful. I mean, that just it just really just gives me a heavy heart. Because we should be able to agree respectfully to one another.
Or disagree respectfully. Certainly, all of us here respect and appreciate our employees of the city and our residents, and no one suggested, but certainly if you are looking at potential outlay of funds, there is always the potential that that could happen. It's a business. The city is a business. And you have to look at all possibilities. I did not suggest that any of our employees who have been struck with COVID were faking. And as someone who's immunocompromised, the whole thing scares the living daylights out of me, and I have friends who have almost died from it. So, yeah. It's extraordinarily serious. No one's seen anything like this, and I did not, and I'll repeat, I did not suggest that anybody had faked. That's all I'm going to say.
You did suggest
It's not worth discussing any further.
Well, you're free to stop anytime you like. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
We have a motion adjourned by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Okay, motion to adjourn passes. We'll be back on Monday, January 4, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We are adjourned. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy holidays.